We prepared the underlined strikeout version of the changes that were discussed during our committee meeting on September 14th. And the first one, under Positive Business Climate, on page four, the underline reflects a new adopted strategy. So Strategy Two in there becomes Strategy Three. And the new Strategy Two about utilizing innovative technologies in our own updates to streamline and create efficiencies in internal processes, that was in response to Council Member Vargas's interest in making sure the city is leading edge on our own technology upgrades. And then two of the existing actions were moved under that heading, so that's kind of how we are proposing to restructure that. Other questions about that one? For the second one, Economic Diversification, we added the Sammish Way Urban Village under properties that the city owns that we would like to activate, and that reflects that the city has acquired the Aloha Motel property. The third, under Land and Infrastructure, is to clarify in Doug Thomas's quote that we're talking about the wastewater treatment facility and also fixing his title, he's not the owner of Bellingham Cold Storage, President and CEO. And then under Quality of Life, on page 12, the first and third bullet amendments just recommend some clarifications in the language. And then the second bullet is in response to Council Member Lillikwiss's comments about the current discussions with the Transportation Benefit District about the status of WTA and how we're working in enhancing the transit infrastructure. Those are our proposed changes in brief. Happy to answer any other questions or...
Roxanne.
I would just like to proudly move to approve the City of Bellingham's Economic Development Strategic Action Plan.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. So since we are under committee of the whole, before we go to our next item, we can do committee meeting minutes for September 14th.
Move approval of committee meeting minutes for September 14th.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. We also have the special meeting minutes for September 9th, the Wattem County Jail proposal.
I move approval of the special meeting minutes for September 9th.
Good.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions, six zero one. No, I'm, yeah, no, six zero two, I'm sorry. Six zero two. Now we have eight members, my goodness. Yes, five zero two, I'm sorry. Okay, any other new business before we... Terry?
Yeah, kind of relates to this special jail proposal. Doesn't look like the county's taken up what we sent them, so it kind of leaves, I feel, it puts us, some gameships continues to be played of, well, we're going to consider, we're looking at, we'll try to bring back, or whatever. But it seems to me this is just a way to keep this body from making public statements that we're not supporting the ballot measure as currently written. And I kind of feel that it's important for us to let our citizens know that there's a ballot measure out there that could affect, that's going to affect them, and that we feel is a bad ballot measure. And so I'm just wondering if there are other council members that feel it would be appropriate to do a statement to the Herald and the Weekly about our concerns with this measure, not just to do it... Yes, Peter?
Yeah, just to be mindful, you know, if there is going to be the body making a statement along those lines, we do have to follow state law with respect to, the same way we're setting up the public hearing on the charter review.
But if we do individuals and then individuals sign on to it, are we okay?
I'd want to get back and get something to the council, just giving the real clear parameters based on PDC guidance on that. I just, I want to be mindful of that, and I don't want to do it, outline anything right off the top of my head, but certainly council members individually can express their opinions. It's just, it all comes down to a matter of using city time, city property, unless we're in that specific category.
What if we were just issuing a press release stating that we will not support the interlocal agreement and current jail proposal, not mentioning the election, but that we don't do that?
Yeah, one of the challenges with this is we have had this pending ballot measure, but we have had the agreement at the same time, we have a jail plan at the same time, so I think we can, within the boundaries of the law, certainly council can make expression about certain aspects of what's being considered. The interlocal agreement is separate from the ballot measure in some respects, the jail plan itself is, but I just want to work with the council on what that may be.
Yeah, it just seems we, we had a special meeting, we did what, you know, sent this, and then it's, it's just, as far as we know, it just lays there. So it seems important that the public knows that we have still supported the jail, but they're not acting, so we can't...
You were there the night you presented, what did they tell you? Well, go ahead.
Well, they, all they did is accept the proposal, they didn't have any debates about it, and they accepted RUD's, or, what is it? Yeah, RUD's resolution, they said, yes, we'll discuss this. I did have a meeting at the Small Cities on Tuesday last week where the proposal that Bellingham had made was presented by the county executive, I was allowed to discuss the presentation also. There didn't seem like there was going to be any movement on the part of the Small Cities to change anything now, but we weren't asking them to. Some of the Small City councils have taken another stand in support of, or in opposition to what we're proposing and what they're proposing, which is fine, we were never asking them to change their mind. I have not heard back from council, about, the county council, about what they're considering doing. I don't know, Terry, you may have talked to somebody, so I don't know if they're going to be considering it or doing anything with it, different than what the executive has done. And also, I read, I think I read in the newspaper that, and I was gone this weekend, so I might have, maybe I should know this, but that Jack would be talking to me on Thursday about whatever, I don't know. So I'm not, I guess it would be good for me to have the position of the council clarified, so as I go forward with the task force, with Dan or whatever, I know where, you know, where the council is.
Michael.
But right now, I don't think there's been, they have not taken any action on anything, but then, and I'm speaking of the council now, but I haven't heard the council say that they won't. And I have heard council members say they don't think that supporting the ballot measure is tied to the jail use agreement, which I find a little confusing, but...
Do they, do they meet tomorrow night? Does anybody know?
Mm-hmm.
They do meet tomorrow, okay, Michael.
Well, actually, that was a perfect introduction, what Kelly just said and what Peter said, the ballot measure is not the same as a jail use agreement. I think that distinction is really lost on the public, which is what is going to be confusing at the ballot. We don't necessarily have to object to the ballot measure if that ballot measure would be used to fund the sort of programs that the city is looking for and to apportion costs in the way the city believes is fair. So our real disagreement is not with the ballot measure, which makes it hard for us to take a stand on that ballot measure, our real disagreement has to do with the jail plan, and that's not actually up for a vote of the people. And so it's really difficult for us to make a clear statement that doesn't further confuse those two things, which we know are separate, but are nonetheless linked in everyone's mind.
Terry.
I think unfortunately, the lack of action by the county council yet has just let this uncertainty continue, and it's hard to figure out how to solve that.
Well, and they were presented together, so when we're talking about, you know, the confusion, they were presented as if they were one and the same, when I think our legal council has always said that they're not tied together, that one, I mean, actions may happen as a result of us not signing one or not, whatever, but they're not tied together. The proposal on the ballot is the two tenths of a cent for the construction of a jail and other, does it say other, other, something else?
Public safety.
Other public, other public safety proposals. So I think that would be good for you guys to clarify that for the public too, because there may be some of you who do or don't support the ballot measure as it stands, with or without a jail agreement, there may be some of you that do. So I think that probably, Terry, that's more what you need to think about, because we don't have a jail use agreement yet with the county.
Mm-hmm. Terry?
Yeah, just, you know, it's, this meeting or a public hearing meeting, you know, about the last dates that we can take any action or whatever, where it's going to have anything to do with, it will have any effect with elections, because beyond that, ballots are already out and people, people are voting. I particularly think that our proposal is probably a good proposal to run in the spring when we have to go back when it, when this one fails, but I think it's, somewhere I think it's important that we, that our citizens know that we don't think this is good for Jack just mentioned to me a possibility, and I don't know if anyone would want to do this or not, but we are having a hearing on some ballot measures next Monday, and we could add an item, but that might be, you know, I just...
Can we do one thing? Can we just wait and see what happens tomorrow night and see if the county council does bring it up? You know, maybe it's not on agenda, but maybe it is going to come up. I mean, I'm just throwing that out, I don't know.
And I could also ask, you guys could also ask, I don't, because I haven't heard anything that is going to be discussed.
I would be very reluctant to add this to that meeting coming up on the...
Very. Can I ask a question then about what you just said? So, so the issues are taking a position against the funding mechanism that's on the ballot, right?
Yeah.
That's what you'd be talking about, okay.
Yeah, but just, if we don't do that, you know, that is our only last chance, could we add at least an item on our agenda for the public hearing for the council, for us to address the interlocal, the interlocal agreement one more time, because then we would have heard if the council takes any action and still have time to make it known that, okay, they've accepted this, and we can go forward and we can all rejoice and say hallelujah, or we can say, you know, we don't support this. Could we do that, just add one item to it? It's not, not to have a hearing on it, but to add the item, whether, where we stand with it.
Go ahead, Peter, you wanted to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, you can add, it's going to be a special meeting, it's a public hearing, but it's also a special meeting, and I think we're just working on putting the agenda bill for that, you could add an agenda bill that says something like review status of jail use agreement and discuss next steps, or something like that, and then you would have the option to talk about that.
I just think it totally shifts the focus away from the meeting we're having, which is to talk about some very important charter amendments, and now we're turning into a jail discussion. I don't agree with that at all, it might sound like a good idea, I just think, personally, if council members want to come out strong against this, go for it, every one of you, if you want to do it. I don't want to do it, I've already said that I would support it many months ago, but if you guys want to come out one at a time and do it, that's your right. And I don't want to spend all afternoon talking about the jail, and we've got other items to go through, but it's up to, it's up to every individual. Individual council members have come out against ballot issues many, many times, so, Michael.
Two things, one, I agree with Eugene, we have a very important hearing coming up. I understand why Terry wants to have another important issue also come up, but I want those charter review issues to have adequate time and attention, and the jail is so big, it could overwhelm them, so that's, that's why I wouldn't support adding one more item. And the other thing I want to do is sort of answer Kelly's question, I have talked to several county council members, and they're comfortable, or they're willing to accept the idea that we may not ink a final jail use agreement in November, or December, or January, or February, they're looking very long term, and they don't expect the jail to, you know, shovels to start turning dirt for months. They're feeling that we have time to work out the proper jail use agreement, but they're going ahead with the ballot measure. So I mean, in at least some county council members' minds, they've really made a big separation between the jail use agreement, which they're seeing less haste on, and the ballot measure, which has a date, certain deadline. So, you know, I'm just saying that across the, across the street, there is some separation on those two issues, and like I said, I think it leads to confusion, I don't think that's their intention, but it's a complicated issue, and I think it's not clearly heard by everyone.
Dan.
I just want to suggest, I have taken enough stands on this, my stands are done, I would like to sit, and I would like the county to take responsibility for their problem, because this is the county's problem. Also, there has been so much confusion amongst our community about who is responsible for this, where people have been, you know, misinformed and led to believe that the Bellingham City Council would have responsibility for this. I want to end that, I want this to go back to the county where it belongs, the voters will have their say, and I would just like to sit and relax now.
I myself wanted to add the comment that I don't want to get the public hearing that we have set for a very important issue next week confused with the county jail proposal, and I also think that there, the more leadership that we show on this, the more it looks like it's in our hands, and that is a concern, because it's not. I think Jack and then Terry?
Yeah, I understand you don't want to mix up the charter review and the jail issue. The other possible way of being able to do this, because yes, we can go and individually talk about this and make a position as council members, but there is a strength, and we may end up talking about this next week, about whether or not the council wants to make specific positions on charter review amendments, I don't know, that might come up as a motion. The jail is also another one that we may want to go and do, and to me, I don't think that I want to go and sit on my hands with this, I feel very opinionated about it, enough that I would like to go and see whether or not the council would like to go and have a council position on this issue. And I'm wondering whether or not you'd want to go and do this on October 12th, which is still about one month, and it's before the ballots actually get dropped, that we could have, in the evening, have a public hearing that lasts for as long as it needs to last, but, you know, at that point, we would have accepted the public's input into it, and we could then have the option of being able to do that.
Dan.
I agree with Council Member Weiss that that would provide us enough time to, for legal to take a look at what PDC rulings are as it relates to council decision on this matter, and that does provide the timing before the ballots drop. I do, I do want to make a clear and articulate statement as to where the city stands on this issue. We have made major concessions with the jail plan, ballot measure is a different item, but I feel like we have done, we have done a tremendous amount of giving, and there has been not a lot of reciprocity on the other side, on the county side, and more recently, there's just been silence. So I would like to visit this topic on October 12th as a council and make this an item that we would discuss.
Peter?
And just to be clear, the one thing, I mean, I know that you can put an item on your agenda on the 12th, for example, and you can take the public comment, and then it's open as to what the expression of the council can be at that point, so I just want to, that I do know you can do.
And it should be, open, yeah.
My fear about doing so is that this is just going to turn into another, we love the jail, we hate the jail, show, and we have been through this so many times now, because if you just read generally, it's going to be an update on that, people are going to view that as another opportunity to voice support or opposition, and this is the county's issue at this point.
I feel as though we have asked the county to be responsive to the offer that we made, and I think it is their obligation, they have not had a meeting since that proposal, which is tomorrow, I believe, is their first meeting.
It's the second meeting, they had a meeting, had a meeting before, already, sorry.
There seems to be a lot, we have a lot of different opinions here in regards to what our next step forward, and also ambiguity around what our legal stance is on this and what we should take, so I'm not certain, I think we all agree, well, we don't all agree, but most of us, October 5th to add to that public hearing, can we just have nods that that is yes or no? Okay, probably no, all right. So the next question on the table right now is whether we want to do that on October 12th, whether we want to have a public hearing.
First, we're going to have to look at the schedule.
Yeah.
I'm bleeding to death, but other than that...
Okay.
Okay. Terry?
Yeah, you know, I understand why not to put it on, because I'm mixing this whole thing with the charter, so that just came up simply because I feel we, we need to make a, we, the council and members do need to make a statement that we've done to the public, that we've done what we're supposed to do, we've tried to make this work, and it's not working, and that vote, yes, it's the county's, but it affects our citizens, it affects all of our citizens this past. Yes, we can wait, the county council can say, well, you don't need to do anything, you can sit, maybe we can work something out, but that maybe stuff is stuff that we've heard for a long time, and I haven't seen anything happen. So, you know, until there's something in front of us, that doesn't mean anything, because I haven't seen any proposals by, that they put out, we put out our proposals, said this is what we need. So, you know, I don't know if we need necessarily a hearing, but I would like to at least have a meeting at some point when we find out tomorrow that they don't take action, that we could either make, we can make that statement for the mayor, so the mayor knows where the council, our final statements are and what we're doing.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what results we would want to get out of a public hearing, what purpose it would actually serve. I think we have a pretty good idea where our public stands and where we stand on this issue, so I'm just not sure what the purpose of having a hearing.
We're going to ask one more question, then we're going to move on, and we'll discuss this more tonight. Jack?
It's an issue of legality, and Peter can, you know, confirm this, but in order for the council to make any position, we need to have a public hearing first, just, you know, it's a process issue, and so we would need to...
On the ballot measure, but not a major local?
About a ballot, any type of ballot measure. So that's the reason why we're having the public hearing next week, is to give us the opportunity, if we so choose, to do it. It's, we don't, we're not forced into doing, but it gives us the option, but we can't just simply take a position without having the public hearing first, and that's, that's the reason. So with that, I would, just to get the sense of the council, I would move that we would establish a public hearing for the ballot, and the jail funding ballot initiative on the November ballot, that we would hold a public hearing on October 12th.
Second. Motion made in second, are in discussion. Marie, do you know what's coming up on October 12th? Not yet. You know, I'm not going to support the motion, the only reason why is I think the council made it perfectly clear when this first came along, you voted no on the jail use agreement, you voted no on the whole thing, and that's a strong statement. I think that itself is strong enough. I don't understand why you think you have to go out and say it all over again, I think you've been perfectly clear all the way through this, you know, and I don't know what they're going to do tomorrow night, I want to see what happens at their meeting tomorrow night. I watched the mayor present it on television, and they said they'd bring it up in two weeks. Well, tomorrow is two weeks, so we'll see what they do, but if they do come back with a counterproposal, if they do, they could, they could send us something back, and then we're going to schedule a public hearing for the 12th? That doesn't make any sense to me at all. Jack?
So actually, I understand what you're saying, and because next week, next week is a special meeting, and we can actually hold any type of business that we want, because it is, it's an actual meeting. Based on what happens tomorrow night with the council, the county council, we could go and entertain a motion like I just made next Monday on the, for our public hearing on the 12th. Is that legitimate?
Yep.
Okay, so I don't know if I can officially withdraw my motion, but I would do that.
On the 12th? Well, that pretty much, okay. Okay, let's, let's move on, just for the sake of getting this done, then we'll talk more about it tonight.
You withdrawing the motion?
No, you already did, you just withdrew it.
Officially, he just says if there's no objection, then both of them are drawn.
Yeah. Okay, we'll go to the next item, the ordinance adding transportation network companies to the Bellingham Municipal Code.
Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office, you have in your packet the ordinance as drafted per your direction from, I believe it was July 6th meeting. I did include, or I should say, Matt and I included a memorandum for your review, couple of things I think that are worth pointing out, how we envision this, I think probably the most significant piece is it would add a new chapter, BMC 6.55, that's in addition to the current chapter on taxi cabs for higher drivers. And then you'll see in the memo, just the section on the draft ordinance itself, it would still require that each transportation network company obtain a business registration, they would also have to have a license, and then there's three main components that they would also have to demonstrate background check, and that's outlined what that would look like, the city would retain the ability to audit those records after they're completed. Vehicle inspection, they would affirm that the vehicles pass a vehicle inspection, and then per state law, there's some requirements around insurance, and I guess I'll ask Matt if he has anything he'd like to add, but that's, that's essentially it, that's captures the ordinance, it's in the packet for you.
Yep, Matt Stamps of the Legal Department, so just to give you a little bit more detail, maybe it helps spur any discussion on this, I thought I was just going to go through some of the main points, Brian hit on most of them, but it might be a helpful framework to think about this as a contrast to the taxi for vehicle code, where the regulation occurs more at the driver level and vehicle owner level, those drivers and vehicle owners come into city to have their vehicle inspected and to submit to a background check, and then that's, those are performed by BPD. The direction from council, the last time this came up, was to prepare an ordinance that would allow the TNCs to screen their own drivers and vehicles against city-established standards, and then during the license process, come in and swear under penalty of perjury that those, that they've looked at the... that those, that they've looked at the record, done those checks, and verified that their drivers and vehicles meet those city standards. So that's what this ordinance does. And just to hit the kind of three main points, so the TNC, the transportation network company, would come in and actually receive a TNC license. The driver would not come in to the, you know, the front counter. Instead, the TNC representative would sign a sworn affidavit saying they've verified several things, the first being the vehicle inspection, and that would need to have been performed by a certified mechanic, and there's a checklist in the ordinance of all the mechanical items that that mechanic would have to go through and verify is safe and in working order. The next piece, as Brian mentioned, is auto insurance, and this year, the state legislature passed transportation network companies' specific auto insurance requirements. And it's kind of unique, I don't want to bore you with the details, other than to say that it recognizes the fact that those are drivers using personal vehicles. So for example, in the time period where that driver's logged on to the, to the network application, but has not yet accepted a ride request, there's insurance levels of $50,000 personal injury per person, $100,000 per accident, whereas once they accept a ride request, then the insurance requirement jumps to $1 million. And so the TNC will have to verify that that insurance is in place. It's usually put together, I think, through an amalgamation of the driver's personal insurance with the TNC's insurance kind of overlaid on top of that, is how they establish that. And then finally, there's a, the driver background check, and the code provision will require national, state, and local criminal databases and sex offender registries to be checked, and then to verify that the driver's not on a sex offender registry and does not have any convictions for serious crimes that are enumerated in the code, like DUI or DWI, any fraud crimes, sexual offenses, or crimes involving property damage, theft, or acts of violence. And then finally, the city will have the right to audit the TNC's records on those issues to verify compliance, and that can occur under the current draft twice annually on a random basis, up to 20 drivers per audit. And then targeted audits, where if the city received a complaint about a particular driver, those could occur without limit throughout the year. There's, you know, some other details in there, obviously, and I can answer any questions you might have on that.
Okay. Council? Any questions? Michael?
Well, thanks, Gene. The first things that I really objected to in the previous proposals, that we were, we were basically forcing all driver-for-hire companies to fit in one model. We were taking away the traditional model and inserting a new one, and I thought that was inappropriate for us to be choosing business models. This proposal leaves two independent tracks. It leaves the regulations for taxi drivers as is, and it creates a new one for the transportation network companies. I really appreciate that. It removes one of my main objections. Unfortunately, it's created a new objection, which is I think our taxi cab regulations need to be brought up to current standards, that we don't specify the inspections nearly as clearly, and the criminal background check, as performed by our police department, doesn't check the right databases. So even if we pass this, I think we need to go back to the taxi one and add some of the elements that are existing in the, this network company one, so that the taxi one is similar standard. I don't think we need two different standards for criminal background checks. We need, if a driver is for hire, they need to have their background, their criminal background checked to the same degree of rigor. So this is an objection against this ordinance, but it means that I think we need to go back to the taxi one and fix that one, too.
Terry?
I think you just clarified it, but I was going to ask you, is there an objection to this one? The other, you know, when I heard the last statement, you don't have an objection. Here, you just want to bring something up for another time. Okay. That's what I wanted to find out.
Roxanne? I support this, Michael, because I think there's something that we need to do, is consider both sides of the coin. If we're making a positive direction for the transportation network companies, I think we also need to help out the taxi cab services, too. So this could be a nice measure that could alleviate some of their burden, if they have any, with the current ways that we do things.
Jack?
I'm a little concerned about this. I mean, I've, I've offered to you many examples over the last few months about why I think allowing a private company to regulate itself is not a very sound policy. I think that's one of the strongest reasons why government exists, is to regulate private industry. You know, you can just look, last week was what happened with Volkswagen. You know, you need to have regulation, and it needs to be strong enough. When it comes to background checks, to me, that seems like that's, you know, that is a basic premise of what we should be doing, and it should be strong. You know, the last time I spoke about this, I offered you information about what the city of Los Angeles and San Francisco was doing, when they were showing examples of what happened when you had background checks at seven years, when many criminals who had been, who had been convicted and, you know, served their sentence and, and were still going to be Uber drivers, even though they were at eight years or more. You know, why seven years? What's so magical about seven years? To me, it seems like, you know, if you've got a record, you've got a record, and, you know, if you're a felon, it seems like, you know, you're not going to go and have a chance to vote, but you're allowed to go and drive somebody else around, even though you've been convicted of some, you know, pretty heinous crimes. I, to me, I feel like this, I wouldn't feel comfortable as a council member. I would feel very awkward to go and vote for something like this. It's not, this is, you know, an item of conscience for me, and I just don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with this one.
Okay. Thank you.
I think this is pretty well-written. I like that it is separating both the taxi cab and bringing in new industry. I think it's an opportunity for more economic development, a little bit more diversity in our, in our city, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the way it's written. I'm disappointed.
Dan? What's the method of criminal background check? That term is being thrown around without being defined very well? Is it biometric, or what is it?
So the, it would be up to the, it'd be up to the TNC to, you know, contract with the vendor to obtain those background checks, and then what the code just specifies is the, is the type of databases that would need to be searched, both local, state, and national, and sex offender registries. But it doesn't define or dictate who the vendor would be who would provide that background check. Here at the city with, for taxis and for higher vehicles, it's BPD who conducts the check by directly looking in its own databases, municipal court records, BPD arrest records, and county sheriff arrest records.
So it's name-only based, or social security number?
Well, it's not fingerprint currently, as I understand it, for BPD, they'd be better to answer those questions, but in looking into this, I mean, that's what I've come to understand, that it's based on social security number, photo ID.
Can citizens in Washington State petition to have their names removed from a sex offender registry, as they can in California?
That, I don't know. One thing I would mention, though, is under our, to Michael's point, there is some area under the taxi code area for, that improvements could be made, certainly, and that's on one of them, which is that, as I understand it, we have the authority to do fingerprinting, but don't currently do that due to the fee structure that's in place not being adequate. So that's one area we could move to a fingerprinting-type background check, rather than simply name, social security number.
Okay. The reason I ask is because Uber relies on a sex offender registry that is missing about 30,000 names in California, because those individuals had their, had petitioned to have their names removed, and the seven-year, this language here says a search of no less than seven years of database history, that's the maximum, that in this case Uber will go back. And there were several convictions that didn't get picked up in a, in a screen, including kidnapping for ransom with a firearm, assault with a firearm, grand theft auto and fraud, robbery, identity theft, welfare fraud, burglary, sale of methamphetamine, five misdemeanor drunken driving convictions in the last seven years. So trying to figure out what the best screening process would be, so those individuals that might be a danger to them, to their, to their passengers, are not going to be drivers for a transportation network company.
Okay, what's, Roxanne, then, Michael?
I would just move that we would pass the ordinance adding transportation network companies to the Bellingham Municipal Code.
Second?
Motion made, second. Michael?
I'm not so sure I want to pass it entirely unamended, because there's another point I want to bring up, and it has to do with, again, the difference in our standards. Our current standard is a 10-year criminal background check. This is a seven-year. I haven't heard a discussion as to why we've dropped our standard from, it says, investigation shall include or review any felony misdemeanor and traffic convictions which have occurred in the last 10 years. Upon completion of investigation, the police department shall make a recommendation. So we have a 10-year standard. I don't know if, if the staff members have a reason why they have recommended reducing from a 10-year background check to just a seven-year background check.
So the seven-year, the difference there is that's what the industry is going back currently at seven years. So certainly, council could require more, but that's where the, that's where that number comes from.
Go ahead.
I would move you amend the ordinance to make a seven-year background check of the databases for criminal history.
You mean 10 years?
10 years, 10 years, sorry. Too many to be 10.
Already 70 seconds.
Sorry.
Is there a second to Michael's motion?
I'll second it. And also, make another amendment to require a biometric screening process.
We have to vote on the first one first. Okay, all those in favor of changing it from seven to 10 years, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, 6-1. Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
I want to make an amendment to this ordinance to require a fingerprint as a background check method, a screening.
Second?
Motion made, second. I think we are go...
Go ahead, Michael.
Well, I second, really, for the purpose of discussion, do private companies like Uber even have the ability to do fingerprint checking? I'm not sure they can. I'm glad that we have that ability, but is it a reasonable thing to request? Do, can they even do that if they wanted to?
I don't know the answer to that question. I suspect they can. It's, it'd be contractual in nature with their, with their, with their drivers, but how they would run those fingerprints, I don't know. I don't have that background in terms of how these checks are performed by private companies in that level of detail. Brian, do you have something?
No, I was just going to offer that I'll ask them this afternoon, and...
Sir, will you come down, and you can answer that question? Just come on down to the microphone.
On the seven-year background check issue and on...
Your name, please.
Jonathan Hopkins. I'm the operations manager for Uber here in Washington State. On background checks going back seven years, various states have limitations on how far you can go into criminal history, and the limit in many of those states is seven, and therefore, we're not legally allowed, since we are checking a national database. It'd be different if you're checking a Watcom County database. You can use whatever rules are in place here, but since we have to check databases around the country, we have to comply with laws of the various states. So certainly, if we find out somehow that somebody has, has some egregious crime, they do get taken off the system. But the background check by law in many of the states cannot go further.
About the fingerprints?
Fingerprints, we have nothing in our system that allows us, we do not do biometric fingerprinting. Basically, just like cities do, like hospitals, schools do, you basically have to choose an approach and stick to it, or else you double or triple your costs. And each method, each method that you choose of doing background checks, there's, each of them has issues. For example, in the city of Seattle, the city did, like Bellingham does, fingerprint background checks. When we took the list of city-approved drivers that were operating for-hire vehicles that were going to be added to our system, our social security number and name-based system rejected 10% of them, a full 10%. Other national independent studies have shown that biometric systems, because sometimes there's low-quality fingerprints, and because it's a voluntary FBI database, so not every jurisdiction upload, like, adds their information, there can be an error rate of at least 7.5%. So what I'm saying is that, Councilmember Hamel, you noted a couple instances where there was, like, something didn't show up for some reason, right? We have the same issue with fingerprint background checks, and it's not part of our system. We have to choose one. Ours catches a lot that fingerprints do not, and when we've, and it also, it's really very important to note, that it's a significant improvement of what is the current considered, until now, a safe process here in Bellingham, which was just to check the criminal records in Watcom County. So for that reason, we consider this a significant improvement and comparable, but different, to those fingerprint background checks. And additionally, we can't, we can't choose different systems in every, in every community we're in. If Bellingham launched, it would be the 332nd city that we're in, and we could launch by Halloween. But if we have a mismatch of all these different systems, like, we would not be able to launch in small communities with that. We have a system that's solid, and, and we can, we can prove it.
Okay, Dan?
I just want to make it clear that what I'm trying to get at here is the highest level of safety for our citizens that are getting into these private vehicles and being transported within our community. Whether it's biometric or live scan, which is another one that's being talked about, or a name-only, I don't want someone to be able to slip through and become a driver for whatever company comes to town, or taxi, for that matter, and, and be in a position where they're alone in a vehicle with a person, a citizen. So I'm trying to get to the highest level of, of safety. I'm not opposed to the shared economy model of for-hire, for-hailing car services, not at all opposed to that, but what I want to do is make sure that we're safe. That's really the main point. We have a similar interest, like, safety has to be our number-one priority.
Okay, let's get back to the motion. Dan made a motion that they require fingerprinting. Any further discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Motion loses 2 to 5. I think we're ready to, Michael, go ahead, and then we're going to move on.
The motion which passed on the 10 years, I'm just wondering if we could understand that, if legal could understand that, to put in some language, like, except as otherwise prohibited by law, to go back more than 10 years, do you know what I'm saying?
I can, certainly could draft it that way. I don't know if that addresses, or that works with...
Well, no, we'd be requiring a 10-year look back unless prohibited by law.
Yeah. Certainly, I can draft it that way.
Terry?
I just wanted to address, Dan, does I agree with you on the last motion, on the reasons? But I also know with all of our different systems we have, we try to do that, you know, we have that with vulnerable adults, vulnerable children, in different kinds of programs, you know, whether it's care centers, whether it's schools, other things. And no matter what systems we try to do that with, some people slip through. They get missed with the fingerprints because, you know, they, and whatever. So, you know, we've got vulnerabilities with, with all of them, and I'm, you know, so, you know, I do share, and I think we're trying to do that as well, but I understand what you're bringing up, you know, but unfortunately, those things, none of the systems seem to be perfect.
Jack?
And because that, that's why you would, you would want to have multiple ones to overlay, to be able to catch exceptions that wouldn't work in one particular program than it would the other. I had a question for you, Gene. If I strongly oppose this, can I get two no votes?
Where are you going to get them from? Talk to Michael. Okay, the main motion is on the floor. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
A very strong no vote from Councilman Weiss. Michael?
I would like to move that we ask the administration to review the taxi cab code and suggest recommendations to harmonize or improve, harmonize that regulation and improve the background check quality.
Second?
Motion made, second. Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Stamps?
Just wanted to be clear, so the amendment, the 10-year motion, I'll prepare to state, as Councilmember Loc was asked, 10 years unless otherwise prohibited by law.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, the next item is a resolution extending the public access P designation for BTV 10 through December 31st, 2016. through December 31st, 2016. Mr. Heinrich.
Thank you. As you all recall, July, we designated BTV-10 as the public educational government channel for the city that was adding a public component. We'd like to extend that through the entirety of the calendar year of 2016. The Access Bellingham Training Program is currently underway. Its final class will not end until early or mid-December, and we would like to give the graduates and participants of that course as much time as possible to be able to submit content to the channel.
Okay. Counsel? Jack?
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Discussion of the 2016 legislative agenda. Mr. Heinrich, oh, he's busy today.
Thank you. So each year, or at least for the past couple of years, we've brought some ideas forward for inclusion on our legislative agenda, as you all are aware. We're partners with Watcom County and the Port of Bellingham in developing the draft agenda. So in the packet, I included the items from this last session, and I know we had a briefing on these items, must have been maybe a month or more ago. And then I also included a memo to you and to the mayor outlining six potential items for inclusion on our legislative agenda, and would certainly welcome some conversation on those items, and I can also give you a sense of what I think the Association of Washington Cities will do. Right now, what we'd like to do is start compiling this agenda and get it over to our partners at the county and at the port. Their legislative bodies will also have to adopt whatever we end up putting together, but this is very much the first step in that, that process.
Counsel? Michael?
So I think what I heard, I really like to hear. Last time when this came forward, it was a little bit too hardened in place. It sounded like this writing is still soft, the clay hasn't dried yet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. I, this is gonna come under old and new business, but I can do it now for good reason. I attended a meeting this Friday of the Safe Energy Leadership Alliance. It's a group of elected officials across several states in British Columbia that has to do with rail safety issues. One of the items on our agenda has to do with rail safety. It says, "Advocate for increased resources for first responders and for emergency management efforts." One of the things that came out very clearly in that conference is there's a second issue that we may need to lobby on, on a state and national level. The consensus amongst the local elected officials there is there's some things we just cannot handle at the local level, that we really need changes in the way the federal government or state government approaches things. In particular, the question had to do with responsibility for short-term cleanup and long-term restoration. The city of New Westminster, for example, had a coal train spill, and it went into their water, and it creates a great deal of pollution. The coal and rail companies did come in and do a quick cleanup, but they're gone when it comes to restoration. I think that's a gap. Same thing if there was, say, an oil train, and there was maybe a fire in that case. There might be emergency response, which we're asking for, but there are long-term consequences. The consensus amongst people who've looked into this, and it wasn't me, it was people at the conference, is that there's a gap, again, in federal regulations for who has that long-term tail, that responsibility for any impacts on our community. So I would like to add a bullet item that has to do with the, the long-term cleanup and restoration consequences, that our, our state, that our, our agenda to the state and the federal government includes looking for and closing any gaps there, because these communities are stuck with millions of dollars in, in long-term costs with no means of recovery, no, no means of recourse, even though the liable party is clearly identified.
What list are you talking about? Because we have the list-
So I'm on page 55.
Yeah, but on, I thought, didn't we do it last year separately? We passed this one, then we did our own list on a different piece of paper.
Well, we definitely had a lot of discussion about how we were gonna have sort of two, two tracks, if you will, the joint legislative agenda, and then we had some city-specific items. The city-specific were not demonstrably different. They were more to-the-point specific projects or specific areas of interest. But, I mean, I guess moreover, to Michael's point, I, I think that's entirely fair. We've tried to capture rail safety efforts in the past, and there was, there was legislation this past year. There's, there's certainly an ongoing federal discussion about not only at-grade improvements, but, you know, tanker safety and things of that nature. So I, I don't think it, I think it's perfectly housed in this, you know, future agenda as we put it together.
No, I, I think it's fine to add something like that because it's related to one of the bullets on our combined agenda.
We focused on the short-term consequences. What if there's long-term consequences? That needs to be talked about.
So you wanna go ahead and make a motion then, Michael?
I would make a motion that we suggest adding a rail safety item to our legislative objectives, which includes looking into the responsibility for long-term cleanup and long-term restoration that result from rail accidents.
Okay. I'll second it. Motion made second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Jack?
Just clarification, Michael. Is that for the ones, are you proposing that this goes to Watcom County and the port as well?
You know, I think we certainly asked him to support that. I mean, trains derail all across the county. There's no reason they, they wouldn't, or when they, they might derail-
Just wondering which page you want to have that on.
Yeah, I was looking at-
Just for a point of clarification, the agenda on page 55 is from this last legislative session. That was in there just as an FYI.
Yeah.
The items captured on page 56 are sort of looking forward in what I hope will be the foundation, plus this most recent addition to what we ultimately send over to the county and the port.
Okay. I was assuming we carry over a lot of the 2015 to 2016.
And some of them, if you look at the, they're talking about, like, implementation of the transportation projects and at-grade crossings on the rail. I mean, we, we looked at if we achieved part of that, what would be the next step? So we've already edited some of these.
Okay, does somebody want to move the whole, the whole list now? We, that was just, we just, oh, no, we passed it adding his suggestion.
Or did you just amend it?
No, we just, we just amended, so we have to go back. Somebody needs to make a motion for the whole.
Well, you don't have to adopt the whole thing right now. There might be ads that come from the county and port. We just wanted to have the discussion and have an opportunity to add some items from the council.
Michael, you had something else?
Well, I, I like the six points that the, or the mayor's memo, and I like, of course, the seventh point we just added for discussion. I would just say, a lot of these are gonna face a real uphill battle because they're asking for money from the state, and that, that lemon's been squeezed pretty hard. Personally, I think that our, our city emphasis should be on the aquatic invasive species eradication program, which can actually be funded and is funded in every other state by a boat user fee. And right now, we're having to do with a very high boat user fee locally only, whereas it could be a much lower boat fee if it was done at a statewide level. And I think that's important because this isn't squeezing the lemon, you know, of, of state finances. It's more likely that we can get that passed than some of the others, which face an uphill battle. So personally, I would just hope we emphasize that one.
Jack?
One, one of the ones I thought that we could add to our list is, is a supportive governor, Inslee's Climate Action Plan, and the stuff that he's, he's trying to propose, that he's had some, some rough, rough goings with the, with the state senate, but I'd, I'd like to have us be able to take a position where, where we have our lobbyists, you know, assist in that, if it, if it gets to a point where, you know, there's some serious discussion about, about moving forward with climate action issues. And I don't know if anybody is, you know, wants to object to that, but I, that's something I'd like to, to propose in some, I, I don't know what the language would be, but.
Well, first of all, to Michael's question, I guess I, I'd like to know the direction of the council on this because, having sat in that body, I know that something like aquatic species is gonna be the first thing that gets cut off the list. And I'm looking at what else is on here that we deal with every single day, and I might just caution us not to put something, leaving it on the list as it is, but not to say, "This is what we want," because we might be sorry, and that might be all we get, and no housing, no public safety money, no other things that we're talking about. So that's a discussion for you to have. Secondly, I think we can raise the climate, I, I support what Jack is saying. We can raise the climate change issue with the county and the, and the port. I think we also, because that is a very broad umbrella, and so while we can support the umbrella, you might want the opportunity to know what the individual pieces are that come forward so that you're not in a position of having agreed to something that broadly, and then the details are something that you might wonder about. So saying that you support it would be good direction, but the understanding should be that our lobbyists would bring back the individual proposals that are coming forward.
Terry?
Yeah, I agree with you, especially your, your first point, that if we don't ask, we're not gonna get it. And yes, we might think one is more important than another and has a greater chance, but we don't know that. So I would prefer to keep these all out there and go for the ask on them, because we don't know which ones, this time we got certain things that we didn't expect, and, but we were asking. And so I would prefer that we just, we do keep that out there.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
I, I do agree with having an overall support for Jay Inslee's climate change initiatives, but yes, I am concerned about the details, about saying a blanket statement, but I do, in essence, support. And also, I probably would not choose aquatic invasive species as my number-one priority on this list, so I, I would not support this being, that being our priority. I'd rather keep the money that we should be getting from liquor and marijuana tax, to be honest. But I, I think a lot of these are, are very important, and I would not consider that one my number-one.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to, to add one thing, is you, some of these items, particularly around, like, Maka dollars or, or liquor and marijuana revenue, it's very defensive in nature. We made some, some pretty significant gains this last session. We don't want to lose sight of that. I think that's to Terry's point. We want to continue to advocate for those. And then I think, I don't know what the governor's plan is with respect to the Climate Action Plan for next session. What I would offer is, and, and again, this list is not exhaustive, and there will be opportunities throughout the session, even though it's short, that the administration and the council can weigh in, in support of specific, specific legislation as it's advanced in, in the legislature. So that's always an option.
Okay. Jack?
Well, I guess I would, I would make a motion that, in general, that we would support the governor's overall plan for, for climate action.
Okay. Sarah, second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Brian. Jack?
I had, I had two other ones to just simply talk about, but I don't know if we want to throw them in there or not. One is that in, in my meeting with PSE recently, they talked, they talked about the fact that they wanted to bring up the legislation that died this last year about decommissioning Coal Strip Coal Mine, the power, power generation plant, and whether or not we want to have our legislative folks involved in that discussion in one form or another. So I'm, I don't know whether or not we want to, but I'm just throwing it out because that, that is legislation that's gonna be coming up again, from what I was told.
I would imagine that'd be the first one the county would never agree to, but just a guess, if we're doing a joint one again, that, you know, we could bring that up separate.
That's true.
I'm just, separately, we could do that. Do you have another one?
Well, I don't know. Michael wanted to comment to that one.
I just want to comment, on this particular matter, I think I'll take the mayor's advice. There are slightly different competing versions that may appear down Olympia. We don't know which one will come forward. We don't know, you know what I'm saying? So we've, we're already on record calling for the ending of coal-by-wire through some kind of closure, but what I think's gonna happen in Olympia is there'll be several different, slightly different competing versions, and we can't say which one we'd like to support. We don't, we, none of them are introduced yet, you know?
Okay, well, we can deal with that later. The, the other one that I had, too, was, was something I was going to bring up today, but because of time and because of the fact that we're gonna talk about it again, as far as the undergrounding issue, whether or not the council would be interested in having us take on as a legislative matter, either at the state legislature, or more importantly, at the UTC, in their tariff schedules, to be able to better address, you know, promoting a better way of retrofitting some of our overground lines into underground That's, you know, it's something I, we don't have to decide today, but if, if it's coming back to us again, I'm just throwing that out, that I would like to at least have that discussion later on.
Okay. Terry?
Yeah, if, as it comes back, if you could verify, you know, the statement of what you would want done with, that would be really helpful for me.
Okay.
I would, I think it's a good discussion later, but.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We will now go on to, is there any other old and new business before we go to executive session? Yes?
Just to clarify, too, depending on what is adopted as a joint agenda and what is not, we'll be able to put that on our individual agenda anyway. So I want to, you know, if you guys agree on issues, they don't have to be agreed with by, by everybody, but it helps when we have the agreed-to agenda and our separate.
Okay. Okay, we're now going into executive session. We have one item, right, Peter? Nothing added? No, we might add it, and we go to the back room. No, we won't. Potential litigation, approximately 10 minutes. I'll be back at about three, 2:55.